I'd like to call to order the August 19th meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Call to roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Agee.
Here.
Herod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Okay, if you're able to stand, please stand. We'll have Pastor Amy Perkins from the First United Presbyterian Church to lead us in our invitation.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we pray for your blessings upon these proceedings. We pray for your blessings to be upon our commissioners, our leaders, that they may be guided by your Spirit of wisdom and discernment. We ask for grace upon our city, and we pray for blessings upon all of its people. In the name of your Son, we lift this up. Amen.
Commissioner Snyder will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm always Snyder.
I was reminded that.
And no one should ever forget that part.
Please forgive me, I'll do better than that. Thanks. Item number one, consider approval of the agenda. Vice Mayor here. I have a second by Commissioner Hall. Call to roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall, second by Vice Mayor Herod. Call to roll, please.
Paul.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, Commissioner comments.
I'd like to make one comment. Since we're going to be covering this on our agenda tonight, I would like to commend Don Lynch for all the work that he's done to help us get every year the matching grant, the forty-some-one thousand dollars. I was looking over in my packet, all of the requirements, all the hoops that you have to jump through to qualify for that money, and I think he's just done an outstanding job on that. And just want to let him know that I recognize that and appreciate it.
Very good. Very good comment. Any other Commissioner comments at this time?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead.
I have one thing. I'm sure people have noticed the ad in both the county paper and the Shawnee News Star about the pool committee is trying to raise funds, additional funds, so I'd encourage everybody that can to donate. I wrote out my check this week. It is a very worthwhile project, and just need to get the word out for those that can donate. We really want to be able to do the full thing, and it's going to take a lot of funds, including some donations.
Good comment. Commissioner Smith, you had a comment?
Yeah, I had a constituent call me and ask us if we are going to spray for mosquitoes in this town. And he's very concerned about the outbreak of West Nile or whatever, and I didn't know really who to contact, to be honest with you, so I was just leaving that out for anybody to answer.
Do you want to?
James?
I killed three yesterday.
Well, thank you. I put my leg.
Yeah, we're spraying now what we've done, the list. Normally, we work off the call-in list, put names down, we go by those addresses. Well, the list has gotten so long, we've divided the town up into quadrants, and we spray every night of the week. We spray a quadrant every night, so we are out there. It just, you know, it takes us two or three days to get back to another neighborhood.
It's good to know. Good question. Good question.
The best thing to do is then standing water.
Right.
Is to drain it and so forth.
I can assure you there's standing water after the last few weeks somewhere.
So, but anyway, I spray mine. I've sprayed, I guess, five times since this summer. I haven't been speaking, but I spray it about every ten days, just to myself.
Now, y'all don't think I'm weird, but I just saw on TV that if you'll put up a bat house, and that one bat eats 2,000 mosquitoes a day. So...
Number one, where are you going to find a bat?
Well, they're around here. Oh, yeah, they used to come in my pool. They're all around.
If you build their little house, they will come.
I have a little house.
You build it. It's a phenomenon.
Well...
I had one comment, and I don't know whether it's a proper enough Commissioner comment, why did we decide on September the 3rd? Were we meeting early? What are we going to do? Or has any decision been made?
No decision has been made. We're kind of going to leave that up to Brian when he gets back, unless she goes, it's not on the agenda for discussion, but I'm kind of, everybody's sort of all over the board with it. I can't really...
So the holiday is Monday, right?
Yes.
So Tuesday is not a holiday?
It's our city commission. Yeah, we're going to have our regular city commission meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The 3rd.
That's what I thought.
The talk was to have the recycling meeting at 5:00. There's been some conversation about how that's not really the best way to go about it, and I think you have a conflict with 5:00, and there seems, and I think you were going to have a conflict with 5:00, Commissioner, but I think...
Yeah, change that date so I don't have that.
So would you rather have a recycling meeting at 6:30 on Tuesday and the commission meeting on Wednesday?
No.
You can't do that. We've already posted that.
Yeah, that's already been posted, so you still have to have.
That'd be a special comment. Well, until we get some surveys or something else, I don't, you know, I don't care whether we have a meeting or not, because, you know, we already know how recycling people feel, but I don't know how our community feels. But we're just hearing from them again.
Why don't we let Brian phone you and work this out when he gets back, since we're not posted on the agenda to work this out?
We got it. Okay. Item number four, citizens' participation, and again, I encourage this to you citizens in the audience. If you have something you want to share with us, you may think we already know about it, but you might be surprised, we might not. So if there's something you'd like to share with us, please come forward. This is your city. Okay, so no one wanting to, no citizens wanting to participate, we're going to go to item number five. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located at 5 Mullins Drive from A1 agriculture to R1 single-family residential. Staff report, please. I was shocked that was agriculture out there. I was shocked.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commission members. The proposal is to rezone 7.8 acres from agricultural to residential is actually what was specified in the application. When we provided legal notice, we wanted to, because it wasn't clarified in the application, we wanted to notice it as the most dense single-family zone, which is R1. But in actuality, staff and the planning commission's recommendation is for an RE designation, which is rural estate, which is consistent with the zoning designation of property to the south and east, including that property, which is included in the agrada estates addition. The subject property does not have sanitary sewer service, and so the largest lot size would be permissible anyway is one acre, which is allowable under the RE zone, so it really would be of limited benefit to zone it as R1. So I just wanted to clarify that right off the bat. The legal owner is the Clarence Mullins Trust. You'll note in the report that there is still some surrounding property that is zoned agricultural to the north, and the Mullins Trust owns the adjacent property to the west that actually fronts Brian. That property is not included in this rezon request. I believe it is for sale, and the hope there is perhaps some type of non-residential use in the future, and there might be the potential there to actually extend sanitary sewer service.
There's church on the north side of it, isn't there?
Yes, sir. There is a church on the north side. The church actually owns the property in between as well, and there's a gap there.
Is that church on sanitary sewer?
That church is on sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer's right there, I believe.
Down MacArthur, but it's not back in Granada.
In Granada, they're all on Septic Tank?
Yes, sir.
Already?
And do they have city water?
They do have city water, yes, sir.
Is Granada, all those homes in there, that's agriculture?
No, it's RE.
It's owned RE, which allows for, I believe most of the lots range there from about an acre and a quarter to about an acre and three quarters.
Okay, I was just thinking, I didn't know that.
Upon review of the city's comprehensive plan, which does designate the area residential, planning commission did recommend approval of the rezon request from A1 agricultural to RE rural estate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anything other than zoning, they'll, after the plan and so forth, come back to you or the planning commission, won't they?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, suggestions?
Well, I asked the question earlier, but I'm still kind of confused. You're recommending RE rural estates, but the agenda item says R1 residential?
Yeah. And the only reason for that is because the agenda item comes straight from how we legally notice it, and we legally noticed it as a request for R1 because the application didn't specify. And so what we're recommending is a zoning district that's less dense, less intensive, and so that's typically how, if we were to recommend something like multifamily residential and we had noticed it as single-family, I think we'd probably have to renotice it and give the public an opportunity to comment again. So sometimes, though, when we have a situation like this, we do note that on the agenda, and I just was not at the, I was gone last week, was not at the agenda meeting, so that's part of the reason why that's not clarified on your agenda, too.
So we can still vote to zone this R1?
You could.
They could do it R1 because it was noticed R1, but the recommendation is RE, which is sort of a lesser included. Okay, so we can make a motion to rezone according to staff's recommendation? Yes. Okay.
And I should note, I don't know if the applicant's here or not. The applicant was represented at the planning commission meeting, and they had no objection to staff's recommended zoning.
We'll open a public hearing here and see.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Justin. Okay. Okay, this time I'm going to open a public hearing on this matter. All those in favor of it, or if someone would like to speak in favor of it, please feel free to come and address the commission. No one coming forward then? Anyone opposing this? They would like to come forward and address us?
My name is Gary Mullins.
Okay, Gary, you need to sign in right here. Please, again, state your name and that microphone for our TV audience.
I'm Gary Mullins, and what we're trying to do is break the 7.8 acres up to sell it. We have a house and three acres we're wanting to sell, and then we're going to sell three other lots, two of lots being an acre and a half, and one being 2.2 acres, I believe. And the way he said residential, that's fine with us. So if I state that...
Are you in favor of it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The way I understand it, it has to be an acre or better per lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So I will again, then I'll come back and ask, is there anyone that would like to oppose this? Okay, if no one opposing it, then I will close our public hearing on this matter, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Winteringer, call to roll, please.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located at 2400 North Harrison from R1 single-family residential to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation. Could we have a staff report on that? Mr. Erickson?
Thank you. This request involves a lot approximately 1.15 acres in size. It is the 2400, the address is 2400 North Harrison, and the existing zoning is R1 single-family. There is a single-family residential structure on the property. The intended action is a rezon request to C3, which would facilitate the sale and eventual development of that property. The current owner, I believe, intends to sell it. They do not intend to develop the property themselves. As you'll note on figure one of the staff report, this is, I believe, the last remaining residential property on Harrison between Federal and MacArthur, excepting the mobile home park further north. The surrounding zoning is similarly zoned commercial to the north, to the south are both zoned C3, and to the east, C3 and CP designations. So it's obviously in an intensely developed commercial area. There is a single-family residential immediately to the west of the property, but that is the only residential property that borders this site. The Shawnee Comprehensive Plan does indicate that this area is designated for commercial use. The planning commission concurred with staff's recommendation and unanimously recommended approval of the rezon request. We did not receive any testimony in opposition to this request at the public hearing before the planning commission. Are there any questions?
What is the purpose of it? Where are they going to put you in over there? Or are they going to sell it?
They're going to redevelop the site, in all likelihood. The properties, there's several small shopping complexes, one located to the north, and one located to the northeast of this property, and they're about the same size, and it's...
The property south of them is also for sale.
Sure as well.
Other questions, commissioners of, Mr. Erickson? Okay, now that hearing, any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Erickson. I'll open a public hearing, and I'll take first comments in favor of this item. Would like, anyone like to speak in that matter?
I'm Roger Henson, and I'm the attorney that represents Lynn Balkum. This property is where Art Jackman used to live, and in our discussion, she's looking at, at some point, selling it. I don't know if it's going to be in the next three or six months, but in looking at the zoning around it, to be consistent with the zoning to the north, south, and to the east, C3, and that's what I had suggested to her, and gave her the data and all, and that's, there are no definite plans like to list it tomorrow or anything of that nature. And what the ultimate use will be, we don't know at this point, in the response, Mr. Smith, to your question. But if you have any other questions, I'll be free, I'm happy to answer.
Now, we can see on the map, it's about the only one left in that row.
That's right.
So, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments in favor? Okay, about comments opposing this matter? Ain't no comments opposing this? I will close the public hearing on this matter, and the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
It's all based on staff recommendation.
Second.
On this one?
I should have read it last time, too.
Same.
I know, I'm worried about it.
Okay, I'll make a note on that. You need to read the title. Okay, before we vote, then, read the title, please, ma'am.
This is an ordinance concerning the zoning classification of attractive property located in the, in section seven of Township 10 North, range four east of the Indian Meridian in Potawatomi County, commonly known as 2400 North Harrison, from R1 single-family residential to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation, and amending the map accordingly.
Well, we already have a motion and a second, so would you...
I'm sorry, I need the second.
Call to roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located in the 300 block Shawnee Mall Drive from A1 agriculture to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation. Could we have a staff report in that matter?
Yes, sir. This is a large rezon request comprising approximately 16 acres, although part of it is already partially zoned commercial. So when that's subtracted out, the actual quantity requested for rezon is approximately 14 acres or so in size. The intended use is a car dealership, and the zoning classification that's requested of C3 does permit such activity as a permitted use. The property is not part of a plat, and so, as Commissioner Herod mentioned, previous application, this request in the future, prior to development, this property will need to be platted, and that request would likely come before this body in the future. The, of course, you're all very familiar with the area. It is intensely commercial to the west and less though to the east, but of course, Walmart complex, Shawnee Mall further to the west. To the north of the property, it's undeveloped primarily, and is zoned A1 agriculture. The maps that are included in the staff report indicate that the property goes just north of the pond feature. In actuality, the line's a little bit south of the northern extent of that pond. It's just kind of a generalized map, but that question came up at the planning commission, and the applicant clarified that the property does not go quite that far north, so I did want to clarify that for...
I thought maybe it's going to be a boat dealership.
That would make sense. Makes sense. We did not receive any comments in opposition to this request, either written or orally at the planning commission public hearing. And in review of the site, the request is consistent with the Shawnee Comprehensive Plan. The planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
It's right out in the middle of a larger plat there, a plot of ground. I was trying to remember.
The owner, sir, is the Dockery Partnership, and I believe the Dockeries own, they do own adjacent property further to the north and northwest.
Behind it on both sides.
I'm a little bit confused about the pond.
Yes, sir.
I think when I hit, if I'm right, I'm heading west on the road, going up toward KFC, and is that right?
Yes, sir.
But you're saying that big pond right there, are you planning on filling that in, you think, or in moving it down closer to the highway?
I think that would be probably unlikely.
I mean, but that's part of this. That pond, I don't see it here on this, you know, looking at the map.
It's right here. Isn't that the pond?
It should show up on your...
So there's that much space between that and the pond. I was thinking the pond was closer to the road, but I...
It used to be, and they filled a lot of it in.
Oh, okay. Okay.
They dug it out and then filled it in.
That's great. That's great. That's a good location there. Okay, thank you. Any more questions, I think? Thank you. Thank you, sir. At this time, I will open the public hearing for all, and if anyone would like to speak in favor of this matter, please come forward.
Good evening. Just to reiterate...
Excuse me, would you state your name?
Sure. My name is Bobby Delottabody. I am an attorney with Phillips Murray, PC, out of Oklahoma City, and I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Erickson had stated. Our client is the applicant on this rezoning request, and we are in the process of purchasing approximately 16 acres of property. Two and a half of those acres has previously been rezoned from A1 to C3. It is our intention to rezone the balance of that property to C3. The properties to our east, south, and west, immediately adjacent to this tract, are already C3, and this proposed rezoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Shawnee. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
No questions, then, I guess. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, at this time, if anyone would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this matter, please feel free to come forward. No one coming forward, then, I will close this public hearing. Do you want to read it now, Mary Ann?
Yes, I can.
Please, ma'am.
This is an ordinance concerning the zoning classification of attractive property in the northeast quarter of section 31 Township 11 North, range four east of the Indian Meridian in Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, more generally known as the 300 block of Shawnee Mall Drive, from A1 agriculture to C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter?
It's all based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Call to roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consideration of letter of intent to enter into partnership with the YMCA on the Kaboom Grant for a community-built playground at Lions Club in the current location of the YMCA's playground just north of the gymnasium. Could we have a staff report in this matter, please?
They're going to put a paper for you?
No.
Kaboom is an organization that awards grants to build, community-built playgrounds. And the location of where this is at is currently the area that the YMCA has used for a number of years. They have soccer there, and they do have a little playground there, and I believe that their daycare goes out there quite a bit to play. And just the other day, I sat into, in the second round of the grant award on a conference call with several of the staff from the Y, and several that had called in, one board member, and one of our commissioners was there listening also. We kind of feel that since this is the city of Shawnee's property, that it would be a good deal for the city to team up with the Y. You never, you never know when the playground might become ours, since it is our property. But I also feel that we have a benefit to that also, no matter who runs those ballfields out there, that the playground could be used during that time also.
Is it going to take the place of one of the ballfields, or is it going to be in it?
No. It will be just east of the ballfields, in the area that, and I know my map didn't show my markings on it, and I don't know if yours did either, where I'd put an arrow in there to mark. I might have sent the wrong picture, so...
There's no arrow on my map.
Well, there's none on mine, too, so...
I got one. What, I did a little research on the grant, there's a matching part of that, isn't there?
Normally, there is a matching to that, and it's 8,500 matching, but in this instance, this organization waives the 8,500 because they want to build playgrounds in the tornado-affected areas. And the Y can speak, the Y's here, and the Y can speak to this if you wish to hear from them, but it sounds like to me, sitting through the second round, that they have a really good chance of...
They just build volunteer labor, that's another thing.
It is built by volunteer labor. The city staff will have just a little bit of involvement in it, not a whole lot, mostly on pre-build, to drill a few holes, level out the ground. The rest of it will be built by hand by community volunteers.
Yeah, it takes being involved in that kid space, it takes a wider organization to get that done, a number of volunteers, so good luck. to get that done, a number of volunteers, so good luck to them. I'm sure, I mean, they, we had plenty of volunteers when we did the kids' space, I'm sure they will take...
Any other questions with the staff?
I was at first concerned about the Lyons Park way up on, behind the school there, but that's not gonna involve any kind of equipment at all.
No.
Okay. Okay, being no other questions, then, I will...
Thanks, James.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the playground, the YMCA's, in agreement with them on the Y, playground, what do we need to do, what does it say? Letter of intent to enter into partnership with YMCA.
I'll second, I'll go ahead.
Okay, second, but... It's quite a motion.
It's not quite a motion.
I know, I'm gonna continue to call her there.
Let's repeat that back. Somebody needs to repeat that back.
I've known her too well.
She ain't know who she is.
Okay, we have a motion in a, in a second, okay? Could you call a roll, please?
Harrod.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens carries.
Item number nine, consideration of possible action on applications of Lynn Operating Incorporated to plug two oil wells. Staff report here.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners, Don Lynch, oil and gas inspector. Before you do, this evening is a request from Lynn Operating to plug a couple of oil wells that they've had in the city limits. The legal description is in your packet, but for general purposes, the, the location is south of Benedict Street, between east of Highway 177 and west of, of the railroad tracks in that area right there. Some of you may have driven by that, kind of, with that area that they've had for several years in production. The wells are, are not producing enough now to be profitable to keep in business, and so Lynn wants to, to go ahead and, and close and plug those, and so they have filed the application for two wells to, to plug those, and we have received the required permit fees, and those have been deposited in the city treasury. Be happy to answer any questions you might have related to...
They also got some permits from the Corporation Commission?
Yes, they have.
They like to three plates, one to bottom, one below the surface part, and one at the top.
Questions of Mr. Lynch?
What the surface, are they gonna, is there cleanup required on the surface?
There'll be a, a little bit. They've been in there already doing the prep work, and then getting, getting things put back to normal. It was already gravel to start with in the area, and so they're just cleaning it up and making it from the, making sure that everything will be put back to normal, so. And it will be inspected by both, me as the city inspector and the oil and gas inspector for the Corporation Commission, to put back in, in the proper order.
That's below ground, right?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
They don't let them plug, plug them.
They won't plug up on top of them.
On top of ground.
Unless it be subsurface.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, thank you very much. Okay, having heard Mr. Lynch's report, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I'll move.
Commissioner Erich?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 10, acknowledged sales tax report received August 2013. It's about time you came with some good news.
No, we actually have some good news. This month, we were up $126,000 over last year, which is not over 9.46% above last set time last year, and that does include the rodeo, and we also think some of it's sort of tornado. For the fiscal year so far, we're up $89,000 of budget. And remember, budget, we've budgeted flat, so we're still only at 3%, even with the large bump that we've had this month. And hopefully, it will continue, but unfortunately, when there's a natural disaster, the sales tax usually go up for a while, and then it will level off again, so...
Okay, questions?
And use tax was also up. And starting next month, I plan to do the top 10 revenue, once we get 90 days' worth of data. Still too early, I'm still just getting July information in, but I would like to do, we concentrate very much on sales tax, but we need to look at some of the Big Ten revenues.
And when you're talking about the Big Ten, like we're getting the audit report? Is that what you're saying?
No, this, this is the top 10 revenues that generate general fund, like franchise fees, municipal tax, I mean, the court fines, just so we know where we are on a quarterly, on about a quarterly base.
Great.
So, we have to wait until we get some more information.
Any more questions? Okay. Item number 11, new business.
There is no new business.
There is no new business. How about administrative reports?
I would like to introduce Keenan English.
Could you speak that real loud, so we could, and have you, would you stand up, sir?
Yes, he's our new assistant airport manager, and I believe today is his first day.
And his name again?
Keenan English.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you here.
Excellent.
Okay, at this time, I'll adjourn our city commission meeting and go to the Shawnee Airport Authority. I'll call it to order, we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Winteringer, seconded. Call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, new business.
No new business.
No new business. Administrative reports?
None.
None. Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority, and call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum, so I'll, item number one is consider approval of the consent Commissioner Harrod?
I'm trying to get Love John into that.
Second, I'll second that question.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider bids for a 24-inch sewer rehab project.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. In the last commission meeting on August 5th, I opened the bids for the Slip Lane Project 13-07, and we originally bid this project out as a unit price job, and the, the bids were really good, and the, the tabs, the unit prices were, were very low, and we feel that they were very real good bids, and we would like to extend the unit price, or extend the unit to 3,770 feet, and do the entire line this year for a price of $468,500, awarding the bid to urban contractors. Instead of waiting and doing half the line this year and half the line next year, the original memo, I believe that I submitted to the commission, was we thought, I thought that the price would come in around $400,000 for just half of the line, but it looks like we're gonna be able to do the entire line for about that same price.
Talk to us, money lady.
It's budgeted for.
It's budgeted for?
But since the bids came in so much lower...
Wow.
There's additional money that we might as well add, 'cause you're gonna get the best unit price because we're doing more.
And we're gonna have to do this anyway.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's a concrete line.
Yeah, have to do it anyway, so, you know, it's just a matter of now or next year, whatever.
It's out of this. North plant, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes.
Do we need to take action on this matter?
Yes, we need to work it.
Okay, so we need to award the bid, and did you name the company?
We're awarding to urban contractors.
Urban contractors, okay.
So that was for how much?
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter?
I move we accept that bid, and...
Commissioner Smith?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call a roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Any new business?[1706.33]